I'd like to call to order the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for January 24, 2024. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Luttrell.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
We have a couple of special recognitions this evening. Tom Hall, a 50-year employee of the HTMA, and Ralph Harvey, a 30-year board member of the HTMA. So I would like if you would both, everybody will stand for the pledge, but if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. We will get to the fun stuff, which is the recognitions, in just a few minutes. Before that, we have a couple of housekeeping items. So first, is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrus.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved, we can move ahead. Consent items, is there a motion to move the consent items that are in your agenda into the record?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrus. Those items include: the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting minutes of December 20, the Board of Commissioners' special meeting of December 27, the Board of Commissioners' workshop meeting of January 10, the treasurer's report for the month of January, and the bills payable, paid bills in the amount of $3,338.58, and unpaid bills in the amount of $454,024.63. With that, I'll call a question. All in favor of moving those into the record, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, those are moved into the record. Okay, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on agenda items? All right, not seeing anybody run up. We have two very special recognitions this evening. It is, you know, loyalty and community spirit and all of those for two very special people, Tom Hall and Ralph Harvey. Like I said, a 50-year employee, the Hatfield Township Municipal Authority, and a 30-year board member of the HTMA. And I would like if Tom and Ralph would join me over at the podium. And then, I think we have some family members, and we'll have them join us just after that. So these are two very special recognitions, and we have some very nice, you know, memorable items for them that I just laughingly, as I walked out, they each weigh about 15 pounds. So if the weight of the recognition is an indication of our appreciation and thank you, you've really earned it, because you need two hands and a strong back to move these around. So let me start off first, you know what, Tom, I'm going to save you for a second just because you're 50 years. Certainly no offense, Ralph, that you're only 30 years on the board, but let's start there. So, you know, just for both of them, let me just generally start off. And we've had some very special recognitions over the years for people who have been longtime employees, and also board members, and volunteers, and significant recognitions. But it is unusual to have two people, to have someone who's been a board member for 30 years, an employee for 50 years, especially as an employee for 50 years, you start to wonder, wow, I mean, I know I've changed jobs over the years, and that is one heck of an accomplishment. So it's not just, you know, it's not just a loyalty to the position, it really is giving back, not only as an employee, but as a board member, it's giving back to your entire community. It's a calling. It's not just a job, it's not just a volunteer position, it's truly a calling and a commitment that unfortunately, you know, in our society, we don't see a lot of anymore. So it's really important at moments like this to recognize people who have done such a great thing for so long, where they've put others ahead of themselves. So our small way of saying thank you is we have a couple of proclamations for both Ralph and Tom, and like I said, we have some nice awards for them. And so I'd like to read the proclamation for Harvey first. And we tried to personalize these as best we could, but still wrapped up into a formal proclamation. So it reads as follows: "Whereas the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners desire to recognize Ralph Harvey for his exemplary 30 years of service to the Hatfield community, and whereas Ralph Harvey was first appointed to the HTMA, the Hatfield Township Municipal Authority, Board in February 1973, whereas Ralph Harvey held positions of secretary and vice chairman of the Board, and whereas Ralph Harvey completed his first tenure on the Board in 1994, when his service to our country and the Army required him to be away from Hatfield frequently," (thank you, Harvey, for your service as well), "and Ralph Harvey was reappointed to the Board in 2013 and now holds the position of chairman. And now therefore be proclaimed, in accordance with the foregoing, that the Board of Commissioners of Hatfield Township does hereby endorse this proclamation as recognition to Ralph Harvey for his 30 years of commitment and dedication to Hatfield Township, proclaimed and presented this 24th day of January 2024, signed by the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners and our township manager, Aaron Beebro. Thank you, Ralph, for everything that you've done over the last 30 years, we greatly appreciate it." So, the award itself is glass. It says Outstanding Service Award honoring Ralph Harvey in grateful appreciation of his 30 years of outstanding service and dedication, 2024. It's got Hatfield Township Municipal Authority name and the Hatfield logo on it. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, as he said, I came to the Board in the early '70s and served for 20 years, and then I was off the Board for over 20 years and came back on. So it took me 50 years to get 30 years. I sort of took the long way to get there. But as you have seen in some, like with Charlie Seibert and whatnot, if you add the tenure of all the board members in the Authority over all the years, it adds up to 140, just under 140 years. And it's been a very successful organization, and the men are very dedicated to the job. And for being a part of the township family, it has been a great experience. Now, they have very good administrative people that support the Authority, and Pete, Joe, Cory, Mindy, Lana, and Zoe, they help us out tremendously, and we appreciate, I appreciate that, because they probably make us look better than maybe we would have been. But also, the township employees at the Authority have actually had long tenure, which we're going to talk about here shortly, and I thank the township for recognizing those people also, because they are part of the township family. And it's nice that they are identified and appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, Tom, 50 years. Could you ever imagine on day one, that 50 years later, you'd be standing here and somebody would be saying, hey, Tom, 50 years?
I'm an alien.
So, you know, just the sheer length of time speaks for itself, and this is just a small thank you that we have. And like I said, we have a proclamation in the award itself. Let me read that for you. And Pete, thank you so much, Pete Dorni, for helping us put this together and helping us, you know, recognize these two great residents of ours. So the proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners desires to recognize Tom Hall for his exemplary 50 years of service in the Hatfield community, and whereas Tom Hall began working for the Hatfield Township Municipal Authority as an operator in September of 1973 during the first major plant expansion as required by the Clean Water Act in 1972, and whereas Tom Hall has become the leader of the Authority's laboratory, a five-employee department responsible for sampling and testing to ensure compliance with state and federal regulations, and whereas Tom Hall's tremendous knowledge of the biology of wastewater treatment provides guidance to his coworkers as well as the management of daily operations, and whereas," I think you're going to like this one, "in addition to his professional accomplishments, he was once a stalwart Scottish Games competitor, excelling in events such as the caber toss, hammer throw, and stone, put along with being a proficient bagpipe player. And now therefore be proclaimed, in accordance with the foregoing, that the Board of Commissioners of Hatfield Township does hereby endorse this proclamation as recognition to Tom Hall for his 50 years of commitment and dedication to Hatfield Township, proclaimed and presented this 24th day of January 2024." Tom, thanks for everything you've done over the last 50 years. Congratulations. This is very, very similar to what we just showed you for Ralph. Also, a very nice award with the Outstanding Service Award honoring Tom Hall, 2024, lettering, and the township insignia. Tell the family all about it, and you'll say, I've been working there for 50 years, and they'll ooh and ah like we are.
Public speaking is not my forte, but I'll try to get through this. That's why I got some written notes here. I'd like to thank this Board for their contribution and commitment to the township, that's number one, and the acknowledgement of my 50-year tenure at HTMA. It's been my honor and privilege to have served over that time span. I'd like to thank the Board at HTMA for their commitment to the community and to the members of the staff. Also, I'd like to say thanks to the management team at HTMA for their leadership and direction. It means a lot. Treating wastewater is challenging and requires a team effort from the top to the bottom to be successful. I'd like to think I presented value over the last 50 years of my service. Thank you.
My grandfather was a teacher. He was a teacher for like 55 years, and I just come to know you started for 55 years in a single profession. This is my boy. Thank you. Thanks for service.
Throwing logs and stuff.
That's exactly right. That's right. You know, it's funny, we have recognitions, a lot of recognitions over the years, but this one more than any, and Tom Hall just left, but we'll have to say, this one prompted more conversations about stone throwing, hammer throwing, and bagpipes.
Lawyer throwing.
Lawyer throwing.
Lawyer throwing?
Yeah.
What? Do you hear this?
Terrible. There's three of us. There's three of us.
I'd pay to see that happen.
We're going to have to get Tom to come back just for a presentation on the stones room, so.
Accept that challenge?
No, no, not with you. He said at you. He still accepts that challenge. Okay, we have one action item for the evening. This is part two of a land development application for 83 Bethlehem Pike. And if I could have the applicant go up to the podium, please. First, let me open up the floor to any residents. Residents with any questions? No? Okay, no one's hopping up. Commissioners with any questions? But a few.
Let's start, Eric, do you want to just do a quick overview again?
Yeah.
Commissioner Andrus wasn't here last week. Commissioner Partha as well, so we have two new commissioners that were not here two weeks ago.
Oh, I forgot. Both, right. Okay.
So, try and speak into this and be able to look at the same time. So it is for 83 Bethlehem Pike. It is the completion of the Broad Street-Bethlehem Pike intersection there, where it was condoed years ago. You have the townhouse development in the back, you have the doctor's office and the train parking on the left there, and you have the self-storage just south of us on Bethlehem Pike, and then it's essentially the vacant lot there, which is the corner of Bethlehem Pike and Broad Street at the light. So that's the property we're talking about. It is 3.24 acres, Zone C Commercial. The proposal is to put on a 50-unit, multi-dwelling unit at that location where it will be owner-occupied. There are 100 parking spaces proposed, 50 which are surface parking, as you see there, and then 50 on the bottom floor of the building. It is a 19,626-square-foot building, which is four stories, and we have some photographs of what they look like as well. I think they're at the next slide. So you can see the elevations here, and we have the engineer here too, so we can go over them in more detail than what a lawyer can tell you. You could throw me out of the way to start your contest there, and then, but the visual from Bethlehem Pike and Broad Street, and probably, is there one that shows the warehouse? Yeah, so this is, yeah, go back to, there it is here, that shows it. So one change to the access that we're proposing here is this would be a right turn-in, right turn-out only. The current access for the self-storage facility is right about this location here, that will be eliminated and replaced with this, so it would not have a separate access point. So you could, coming northbound on Bethlehem Pike, you could turn in and go into this location, but anything coming southbound would have to turn in at the light, come through our new road, and get into the self-storage there. So we are eliminating one access, we're combining them for these two properties here. That's probably the big change for access, which was one of the concerns, which I think we described at the workshop. I did want to address one of the other items that came up during the workshop, if I could, and that was OSHA violations, which may be some questions that you may have or may have heard of. We did take the opportunity over the past two weeks to look at what those violations were, and there were 21 violations that Pulte had since 2001, so that's, put in perspective, that's less than one a year. And Pulte is a national company with 40 divisions throughout the United States, so that's 21 violations through the whole United States. Most of them, or many of them, they range from paper violations, which is failure, to document something with an employee, to a fall, not an actual fall, but they, you know, not securing somebody as you're supposed to. And the one big item I wanted to point out as well is that seven of the 21, while they're associated with Pulte, they resulted as an acquisition that Pulte had with another company. So when that acquisition was accomplished, that other company, seven violations transferred over, so when you look it up on the website, as the gentleman did, who I don't think's here, but as he pointed out, it shows up as Pulte's, but only, so really, Pulte only had 14 in 21 years. And we looked into, there was only one in Pennsylvania. And then we looked further into what that one was, and that was a paper violation. It was simply a failure to properly document the training and education of vendors. It wasn't that they failed to do it, it was a failure to document that in their record books. So that's the only one that was in the Pulte division that controls what happens in Hatfield. So I think they were minor. For the most part, so I just would want to point it out that we did take the opportunity, and we don't think it's a concern for the local division here, or that you should have for them in the future. So, we can go over the waivers if you want, which I would have the engineer stand up and talk about those. We are, we did look at your resolution, we're fine with the resolution, how it's drafted. So with that, I think any more detailed questions?
I don't know that we have to go through them one by one, but maybe if the commissioners have questions, they could ask them at this point.
Let me start off with, you say it's a 19,000-square-foot building. That's the footprint? That, all four, that's got to be the footprint, right?
Hi, good evening. Matt Chartran from Butler Engineering. Yes, that's the footprint. It's four stories, containing its 50 units.
Have you done one of these buildings like this in this area before?
Have to use the microphone because we videotaped. Thanks.
My name's Sam Carle, I'm with Pulte Homes. We have built a similar building, not exactly this one, but we built one over in Upper Gwinnett at a community called the Reserve at Gwinnett. We actually built, I believe it was three of these buildings.
The units are what, about 19,000 square feet per unit?
They actually range from about just under 1,000 square feet to just under 1,700 square feet. So they're different sizes, one-bedroom, two-bedroom max.
You asked for a waiver, so you got two cars per unit, rather than I guess would have been two and a half parking spots per unit. I know that I have gatherings at the place, at some point in other holidays, whatever, where are those cars parked when they come en masse?
So that was a zoning issue that we worked through, but just so you know, that the smaller units that are one-bedroom, they typically have, you know, it's a one-person, two-person usage there, and then a two-bedroom, obviously, or more than that. But there's 40, or I'm sorry, there's 50 spaces underneath that you could purchase those parking spaces, depending on, you know, your interest in that, and then there's 50 outside, so it would mostly be out at surface parking if you had residents, if you had guests come visit you.
All right, and what I'm suggesting is, a few people have a partyed, thanks parking, because I can't imagine that parking spot would be large enough to handle more than a couple guests.
It would all be at surface parking, right?
I get it.
In the front, that's where they would...
But also, there is public parking right next door. Back part of this, yeah, that whole area is public parking.
Okay, so the idea would be that they would find a spot there, if they could, available, okay?
And just to be clear, this is part of the zoning testimony, I think, that was given way back.
Understand, I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine.
Just ask questions.
It dates back to March, I think, of last year, so that's why we were just kind of trying to remember exactly how that was addressed at that time.
One is why this is appealing here, is because it is next to the train station. You might have some people who don't have cars who use public transportation, so that's why this was attractive for this use of this location, is the parking is available and also the public transportation is available, so you may have a lot of people that just don't have a car.
The waiver, you're looking for the underground parking, about 75 square feet away from a parking? Talks about cars are bigger, and yet going to make the parking less smaller, and I can tell you that some of the parking spots out there now are tiny, and you wind up having to squeeze yourself out of your car, or squeeze yourself into your car.
Those spaces, and Sam can attest to this too, is that those places are for sale, they're not for somebody to come in and park randomly, so.
Understand.
But I'm saying, so if you have a larger car, you obviously wouldn't buy one of those spaces. You would only buy those spaces or pay for those spaces if you had a smaller car.
How many cars per unit are you suggesting is going to be owned by those residents?
There's 50 that are under the building, and then there's 50 that are surface lots, so just the ones under the building.
Right, now I get that part of it. So there's 50 units, correct?
Correct. So one per unit would be available underneath.
Right. So how many, what's the average car per unit do you expect to be in that?
So there's roughly 26 one-bedroom units in each one of these buildings, and the balance of 24 are two-bedroom.
Right.
So we're thinking that 26 would have one car, not all of them on the, under the building.
Right.
Some of them would use the surface parking, and then the tandem ones would mostly be for the two-bedroom units.
Here about 50, 75 parking spots would be occupied, residents?
Not necessarily. I mean, it all depends on how many...
I'm just using the numbers.
Yeah, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there'll be two cars per...
I'm just using an average.
Sure.
Right? You're saying that the two-bedroom units perhaps would be one and a half cars, whatever, on average? Ultimately, somebody's got to buy or rent or buy a spot below ground.
Yeah, we found that some folks do like to have the parking under the garage. It's, you know, it's out of the weather, and it is a secure garage. There will be a door that goes up and down, you'll have a car to get in and out, so it is a secure facility.
Question is that this only individual with smaller cars, ones that would want that space underground?
Well, the parking spaces in the garage are 9 by 18, which I think is what's permitted by code for surface parking. I think the code requires 10 by 20 when it's indoor, in the house. So we're asking for the waiver to be 9 by 18 for those units under the building.
Right, you're getting 75 square foot per tandem unit benefit. 9 by 20 is 209, 36 is 320.
So a tandem goes to one apartment, just so you know, a tandem parking space goes to one apartment use. It's not like unit A and unit B both have the tandem, it would just be unit B that would have the tandem, so if they have two...
Cars. Right. So if they had one big car, one small car, if they're buying that spot, they had a big car, a big car and a small car would be down there, if they happened to have a big car and a small car.
Correct.
Not necessarily accurate that only small cars are going down there. Okay. Waiver for spot from six foot to five foot, concrete sidewalks. I know that's something we're talking about to allow for pedestrians to walk, and we're doing that for what purpose? Six, five?
So, the existing sidewalks out there are five?
Right.
So, we're just matching what's existing out there?
But you could make them six. Putting a little round out, and you got six-foot sidewalk, and two people can walk side by side.
Yeah, we could. And part of this is, and I think if you take a look at the landscape plan, if you take a look at, you know, the burms that we have, which are fairly substantial on the site, you know, the additional foot that that would take to go to a six-foot sidewalk, where that doesn't exist right now today, we felt that the benefit was greater to, you know, have the additional landscaping, have the birmingham, the neighbors to our, you know, I guess technically, north and east at Arbor Circle have actually asked that we do additional birmingham, additional plantings in those areas. So, it seemed like, you know, a stretch of impervious coverage, albeit, you know, you could say it's fairly minor, but when you look at the totality of this, we felt that it was, you know, more beneficial to keep it at five feet. You know, obviously, we could go down with a waiver or something, but in other municipalities, there's four-foot sidewalks. So, we felt that five was a reasonable, or hoped that that was a reasonable adjustment to make.
Impervious cover advantage to you is how much percentage-wise?
One, it's, you know, one foot over whatever that distance is. I don't know exactly what that calculation is, but-
I don't either.
I'm sorry?
I don't either, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, you know, if you want me to try to look that up, or try to figure out exactly what that is, I could try to do that, but-
I think it's only this stretch in Broad Street. The stretch on Bethlehem Pike is already-
That's already six feet, or five foot?
Five foot. And it already exists, so it goes all the way up the frontage already. So, that's already, so we're only talking about changing the strip that's from Bethlehem Pike into the-
And I, so if you're suggesting that folks who would park there on occasion for a party, or whatever they might be over in the Septa parking lot, it seems to me that that pedestrian walkway may in fact be used quite a bit, coming from Septa over to this development on that sidewalk, that we're going to cut from five to six feet, or from six to five?
The reality is that that sign book would really be going to the intersection at 309 in Bethlehem Pike, so while I'm sure there is foot traffic that crosses there, I don't know how much-
No, I'm suggesting, what you've suggested, on an occasion where there's Christmas, or Thanksgiving, or parties, folks may be parking in Septa parking lot, which in this case would be left of that area, right?
Correct.
Is that correctly? I think I am. So, if they were to park in Septa side, they'd have to get over here to this development. Would they be using that walkway, the new one you're putting in, as an access to that facility?
Yes, they would.
Let me jump in for a second. Can you guys, I know that you explained this to me the last time you were here a couple of weeks ago, but that, I told you before, that access issues are for me always a significant matter. And I know you explained it to us clearly the last, the last time, but I want to talk about it again. The two access points, tell me what's coming in, what's coming out, which way a car can properly pull out, and which it can, which way it cannot.
From the 309 side, I'm just gonna point here, that's the driveway-
Yeah, the one that's kind of like right above your head. Yeah.
So, right now, there's an existing driveway that's just a little bit south of that on Route 309. That driveway services the North Penn self-storage.
Yeah.
That's technically a full-access driveway. There's no restriction on that driveway in terms of making a right in, right out, left in, left out. You can come into that from any direction. There's no, there's no physical restriction to that at all. So, what we're proposing is to move that driveway slightly to the north.
Right.
But make that a right in and right out only driveway.
Only.
Only. Correct.
So, someone coming southbound on 309 is not making a left into there anymore?
No. They have to make a left at the, you know, extension of Broad Street there, and then make a right into our site. So, they're utilizing the traffic light in that situation. So, that now eliminates, you know, what I'm sure is a potentially dangerous turn at that intersection.
Yeah.
The other driveway that we have off of Broad Street will be a full-access driveway. It's roughly, you know, lined up with the driveway across of Broad Street, which is where the parking, parking area is for the Septa station. So, it's as far away from Broad Street as we can reasonably get it on our site, and still gives, you know, sufficient amount of length there to Broad Street for those vehicles that may be turning left or right. But anyone coming in or out of that driveway's got to go through the light at the intersection. Really just those two access points. We think that the one here, we're obviously off of 309, we're making dramatically safer, and that was, you know, through consultation with PennDOT. It's obviously a PennDOT road that we're dealing with them on that. And then again, on Broad Street, trying to push that accessway as far back as possible, so that people have the maneuvering for the light, people who may be turning off of 309 have sufficient room to do that, slow down before they get to a driveway, and not be impacting, you know, cars that may be traveling on 309.
Is there the acceleration lane for that entry, northbound 309, into that parking area?
No, there is not a D cell lane shown at this. Now, again, that permit, that process is underway with PennDOT. We understand, obviously, that that's a permit that we'll have to secure, so there may be some additional design elements that we need to incorporate based off that coordination with PennDOT, but as of right now, it's just a right in, right out.
That means there's probably no acceleration lane either then, at this point?
Correct.
If they were to require that, how would you accommodate it? Have you thought about that?
I mean, there is room in terms of grass area that's there. There's not room in terms of existing right-of-way right now, so we would have to make a right-of-way adjustment with them in order to be able to do that. So, there, you know, would be some additional impact to it, but going way back on this particular site, we had an application in quite some time ago that did not move forward. But at some point, we had made some progress with PennDOT at that point, and this driveway, this configuration, the same as it was back then. So, again, we, it's a starting point, and it's part of, you know, where we're jumping off with PennDOT, but we believe that based off of, actually, it was much more intense. We had retail shown here previously on this, this particular end of the site, actually much more retail on this end of the site. So, we think that it's a lower impact, and therefore, the design should be sufficient for what we need.
Residents, any questions that anyone has thought of while we've been asking ours?
You have to use the mic. Thank you. No better.
Hi, I'm Tina So. It's on Claremont Drive. The question I have is, the public parking, the Septa parking, do people have to pay for that, or is that a freebie?
We have been discussing it with PennDOT, so we don't know if there's a contract with them, or whether it would just be treated as, or in contact with them to ask those exact questions. Free to them, maybe through a sticker or something, or they would pay for it, just like any-
Any other questions? Commissioners, any other questions? All right. So, hearing none, then, any other portion of the presentation you want us to consider before we call a vote?
No, I'll just say that we did go back after we had our meeting with you folks. We did go back to the planning commission, review the waiver letter with them one more time, and they did address that in terms of their recommendation back to the board. Have, I think was noted earlier, we've seen the resolution, reviewed that, and we're in full agreement with it. I believe that a signed copy has already been given to the township.
Yeah, we have a copy of it.
Right.
All right. And, oh, go ahead.
Those basins on this property, right? Are they going to be naturalized? Is that what the plan is?
Yeah, so-
Naturalized basins?
Yeah, there's an existing, there's an existing stormwater basin that's there right now that's going to be modified to accommodate the additional requirement for space that we need there. But yes, it's an above-ground stormwater basin in that, basically that hatched area that you're seeing there. That's the primary basin that we have. There will be some other additional underground storage that ultimately feeds that, but that above-ground basin will remain.
All right, and that's going to be our new naturalized standard basin?
Yes, it will. And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but immediately south of the building is another basin slash rain garden.
Correct.
That's part of the, part of the design.
Correct.
That is specifically naturalized.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, and I think I already know the answer, but just to confirm for the board, particularly because of the concerns about the access, with the PennDOT permit, understanding that it's still, you know, in progress, I assume that signal timing changes, if needed, will be addressed because of the creation of the right in, right out, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
The one question says, so we have only the parking. For the residents, is there any recreation center, like something like that? Just only the parking, like any recreation center, it could be just only the parking and building?
Just parking for the residents that are there, correct. There's no additional parking for, you were saying for a recreation center?
Yeah, recreation, like gym and all this stuff, facilities.
No, no, there's not going to be any, you know, additional public use for this building. It would only be residents.
And from the train station, you suggested that they will cross the, how they will come to this, they will have the sidewalk through. Yeah, from the train station to the apartment, they will have the sidewalk, right?
Yeah, correct. If you look, there is sidewalk that comes all the way along the frontage, correct. So, the parking area is there, down along the frontage of the medical office building there, over to the train station, and then there's crosswalks at Broad Street, as well as we'll have the extension sidewalk and creation of sidewalk all along our frontage.
Entranceway to the building is, probably aren't going to have people walking all the way down the sidewalk and crossing in. They'll either walk in the roadway, or-
Hey, I just thought of, where are you going to put the snow on snow removal day? Identified areas that are going to accumulate snow?
Matt, is ours working?
The mic, Matt, please.
We have landscape areas in here where snow could be stored across, you know, anything outside of here where the parking spaces are, in here, in here. To some degree, there could be some, you know, snow from the roadway that's pushed up into these areas. There is a emergency access way from here to here, so we obviously would make sure that that area is clear. But there will be sufficient room around the outside areas of that parking lot to be able to store snow.
That emergency, that's emergency access for fire trucks and so forth?
Correct.
That's not a paved road, but a surface that can support it?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, then, it's an action item. Resolution 2402 is our motion for approval of the Gambon Land Development Application, 83 Bethlehem Pike. Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Andrews. Questions, comments? All right, hearing none, then I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 24-02, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out the last couple of meetings, and for working with our solicitor and our staff.
Gave us a busy bunch. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so that was our only action item. And is there any citizens' comments on non-agenda items or other items? And hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
A motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Yeah, I'm saying, I just remember that. So, before I take that vote, I need to announce that the board is about to meet in executive session to discuss real estate. So, with that, then, I will call the vote. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thanks for coming out, folks.